One minute goes by real slow. That's when you're doing that thing and you say you've got two minutes, three minutes, and it goes really fast. You go, I'm done with it. Well, you guys all experienced that. You have a little council debate, right?
I just started speaking.
Yeah, you're done. The lights off. Okay, good, Jamie.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to council. Monday, November the 28th, 2022, calling me to order at 4:00 P. M. As always, remind everybody in the audience and council members to turn off their electronic devices when they're vibrating. Appreciate it. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, November 28th, 22 is regeme a council. So there are many, I do have an addition, just a verbal update on Noma Emo. And their reports for boards, anybody else? Hearing that move by. Council Lake, second by council. All favor. Thank you. Up next, I have the minutes of the previous meetings of councils.
For your exposure of interest, number three.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead of myself. Any exposure of interest? Hearing that, you have a motion here that council hereby does minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, has closed meeting of council, although Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, and Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. And of course, the special meeting of council held on Thursday, November 3rd, 2022, has inaugural meeting of council. It's held on Tuesday, November the 15th, 2022, as they were amended, move by. Council Lake, second by council Suki. Any questions, arrows, or missions in those minutes? Hearing that, call question on favor. This evening, we have a delegation and representatives from the citizens responsible industry in Northern Ontario. And they were here, they're going to be here tonight to give us an overview of the Marathon Plating Project and the oversight committee that has been recommended by this committee. So we invite down, I think Dr. Membury is going to be speaking on behalf of citizens. And Miss McKenzie, thank you. Good evening or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much to all of you for the opportunity to present to you today. I think I've met most of you, but not all. My name is Sarah McHenry, and I'm a family physician here in the community and a member of Citizens for Responsible Industry in Northern Ontario. So thank you again. Thank you. Do I just quick? Thank you again for the opportunity to present to you. What I'm going to provide you is an abbreviated version of the presentation that we made to the environmental assessment review panel as they were moving through their processes earlier this fall. And we were hurtling to see in their final report, recommendation 83, which I think showed up on page 354 or something, which indicated that they were recommending that the proponent should work with the town of Marathon to establish an oversight committee comprising local and regional citizens that would have access to project reporting and regular project updates. The Generation PGM should work with the town to identify an agreed level of funding to support the operation of that oversight committee. A little arrow.
See, once here, it says one of 10?
Oh, yeah.
Right there.
To get the presentation view. So we wanted to just touch on why a community benefits agreement is important and why now. Overall, what we know is that a community benefits agreement can ensure enduring benefits to citizens of the community in the long term and much beyond the life of the project. It can ensure that the land is sustained for both recreation and sustenance purposes, and that feels very important, particularly in our region. And importantly, it can compensate for insufficient government monitoring. And that is particularly important when you look at the data that was presented by some of the other participants in the panel review. So if you have this slide open in front of you, or if you can see it on the screen, you'll see four lines that all projected downward, and that represents staffing, inspections, investigations, and prosecutions of infractions of environmental commitments by mines in the province of Ontario since 2016. The, what this slide basically is indicating is that it's not entirely appropriate for us to rely simply on government monitoring to ensure that the environment is protected because over the past five years, there has been a significant decline in all four areas of that. So a community benefits agreement is a signed and legally enforceable agreement that has, can have both social benefits articulated and social services benefits articulated for the community, but it can also have environmental monitoring and enforcement articulated within that benefits agreement again to ensure the enduring benefit of the project for the community.
We could just take a pause for one second. We just need the most. We're having issue with the sound.
No, no one can hear you.
I'll make sure you don't want to hear you.
Then we get time to figure that out. Don't you love technology?
I love technology.
No, you don't. We have people at home saying they can't hear us.
It's still very muffled.
Will the recording have sound, though?
Yes.
People can go back later and watch it. Okay.
Sorry, Sarah.
So I don't know if it's helpful if I speak up, but I'll try and do that. Okay. So in terms of who needs to be on a community benefits agreement oversight committee, it's part of, it's one thing to have a benefits agreement, it's entirely another thing to have an oversight committee that ensures that that benefits agreement moves forward in the way in which it's intended. And part of what we know is from community benefits agreement oversight committees in other jurisdictions that it's important to have people who have no profit motive and no financial conflict of interest with the project. People who have some institutional project memory, people with both technical and governance expertise, the technical expertise being particularly important for the environmental monitoring, and to have local and regional representation that reflects the breadth of the population that is part of that community. In terms of how, we know that community benefits agreement and oversight committee should roll out with monitoring that happens in phases, much more frequently in the startup phase, less frequently in the more sustainable phase of the project, but it should endure until the project closes. So when we think about the funding, which has come through, come forward in recommendation 83, we know that that funding should be enduring over the lifetime of the project and to the point of closure, and that the oversight committee should be in place for that length of time. The, oops, I think I've skipped a slide there. It is also really important, I think, to understand that the community benefits agreement should be established at the time that the project gets that green light to go forward, and that the oversight committee should be established almost immediately at the time that the community benefits agreement is signed, so that the process of ensuring that that benefits agreement moves forward appropriately can be initiated right away. We think that this is a really interesting opportunity for Marathon. There is no other non-Indigenous community in the country that has a community benefits agreement around a mining project. It's a particular opportunity, I think, for this community to demonstrate expertise and to be a leader in the nation around projects like this. And we certainly hope as a group of citizens that you will begin the process of entering into the establishment of community benefits agreement, anticipating that this project will likely be approved to move forward, so that by the time that project is approved, we can move forward quickly with establishing the signed agreement and the oversight committee to support it. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Dr. Membury, and to begin in the delegation process, we'll ask council if they have any questions of you or Miss McKenzie, and then we can go from there and get the lay of the process from council's part of the council.
Certainly, super supportive of the idea. I think, I remember when Stillwater presented, they talked about their project in the mine in the United States where the Montana, where the citizens group was involved. But I'm trying to think more locally, and it predates my time on council, but I believe you were one of the members of the groundwater steering committee. When that first started, that went into that rap, is that the sort of thing you envisioned or a more formal, and maybe what were the lessons you learned through there, but what worked well in Marathon?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So to bring people up to speed, how long ago was that? Maybe 15 or 16 years ago, maybe longer. Marathon undertook the process following the Waukesha crisis to ensure that our water, our groundwater was protected in perpetuity and as much as you can ever assure that. We established a groundwater steering protection committee that reflected the citizens of the area, and we leaned on a hydrogeology expert to guide the decision-making of that committee. And then the town of Marathon implemented the steps that needed to be undertaken, including things like removing underground storage tanks, as you probably remember, to ensure that the risks to our water were mitigated and our groundwater was protected. I think this can be a very similar kind of process with representation of the community, an articulated agreement between the town of Marathon and the proponent for the project, but that that oversight committee, the perhaps small difference would be specific funding to hire additional expertise, particularly if there are conflicts between the town or the proponent, or there is a need to enforce environmental infractions that are not being undertaken appropriately by the government.
Good. Anybody else? Council Val, do you have any question?
No, I'm okay. Thank you. Great presentation.
Council Suki? I'll just make a comment. Just as I tried, since you guys were doing your delegation, I just tried to do a little background research myself and just see what was out there for community benefit agreements with other mining industries and whereabouts in the country or even like Northwest Territories. And then, so sort of what I would have come across too, like obviously, like from what I've gathered, like the environmental part is a big aspect of what you're trying to advocate for, which I definitely do respect and appreciate that. But I've also like, what I come across is like, they turn like socioeconomic plans as well, right? So, you know, targeting healthcare, education, recreation, community safety, you know, like there's those other boxes that need to be checked off as well. I definitely, I can see the benefit of having, having something like this, right? But it would have to be picked strategically, having people that would, you know, come from those different blocks, whether it be education, healthcare, environmental, and then moving forward with that, so.
Might I respond? So I think one of the, one of the pieces around this is that the establishment of the community benefits agreement does need to be a very active, inclusive process that brings in people who may have recommendations for the kinds of benefits that they would want to see the community achieve, including, to your point, in the healthcare sector, in education, perhaps in other domains of social services in the community. Those agencies absolutely should inform the community benefits agreement. The oversight committee doesn't necessarily have to reflect all of the agencies or community members that inform the agreement, but they have to have the governance and technical expertise to be able to understand where, where elements of the agreement are not being upheld. The town of Marathon, as a municipal governance organization, likely can enforce reasonably well those things that are simply payments. The, the social services elements are going to be largely payment and funding issues. I've emphasized the environmental monitoring because that tends to be the most really challenging aspect of community benefits agreements. But to your point, Zach, the, the social services benefits that can be enduring benefits to the community are really important and really important to have established in the community benefits agreement as part of the development of that sort of policy framework around the project.
Right. Council Lake?
Yeah, I think that that enforcement piece is the piece that I, municipalities are a creature of the provincial government. And so I'm just maybe looking to administration or the research you've done. Are there municipalities that have been able to enforce the sorts of things you're talking about with industry? Or would that be something that's kind of new to the process?
It's a good question. I don't know the extent to which that's been the case with mining projects, but I can say in other places where community benefits agreements have been established with an oversight committee, where there has been impact on the community, Vancouver Olympic Village Development, there's an infrastructure project in Southern Ontario. They were able to enforce the elements of the project that were embedded in the agreement. Those, some of those were environmental, but perhaps not quite as sensitive as mining environmental elements. I can't say that for sure, though, but I think that that would be some really important work in the establishment of the agreement to understand the legal framework through which those could be enforced well.
I just, I don't understand that part of the agreement, but that would be the piece that we need to be, again, an expert.
Yeah, exactly.
Great. Anything else? Council Wyndham?
Thank you, your worship. Has there been communication already with Generation Mining to know that this is something to be looked at? Or like where, where is that in the process?
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a great question. I don't, I don't know at what stage that is. I anticipate that the town of Marathon has had some conversations over the last couple of years. Certainly, there was an announcement about a community benefits agreement between Victagon First Nation and the proponent of the project, and so I think those conversations have begun. I don't know where that's, that process is for the town of Marathon.
And thanks for that question. It's a great question. But yes, absolutely, there has been conversation with the town Marathon Generations PGM project in regards to that, and this council has stated clearly publicly that, sorry, not this council, because this is a new council sworn in, but the previous council has stated publicly through the environmental process and through the panel hearings that we fully support the CBA. And how that looks will be something that this council will determine in regards to the strategic plan that will be taking place starting this month coming in December going forward. So those discussions will take place. Obviously, we're all waiting for the November 30th 120-day deadline, which is coming on Wednesday. We'll have a clear understanding what's, what's the environmental assessment process going through provincial and federal governments. But we've had those conversations. You're absolutely right, and we will continue to have those, and we will, I think, fully support the CBA. And what it looks like is to make sure that we protect the community's interests as well as the environmental impacts in and around our communities as well as our First Nations neighbors and follow maybe some of their guidance and their CBA as well. Why recreate the wheel when we know it's already out there and look at Montana as well? Maybe get some good understanding of that. So we will be working through that with this council's strategic planning and Generations PGM project going forward. Once we get notification after Wednesday, what's the government's rule? Council Lake?
And just wondering from an administration, administrative side, how do we, like, there's a lot of expertise, obviously a lot of work has been done. How do we kind of leverage the, so, I mean, I'm not an expert on CBAs, right? But I would love to support people who do know. How do we kind of keep those lines of communication open? Is it, if we form a committee, obviously it would exist. If we don't, who's the point of contact for administration and council?
I would be happy to be a point of contact. I think, as I mentioned, the Citizens for Responsible Industry is a sort of loose affiliation of citizens, but I'm happy to be the point of contact.
Yeah, I don't believe that BN has an actual committee set up to just have the community and within the community have a specific individual working with the company for the CBA and following the commitments. This will be a structure of a committee set up external from the municipal governance body and have the expertise appointed to us as this committee and as a, as a living committee, because you're going to have to, as you stated, might go on for some, at least 13 years or longer, right? So that's great that you can be the point of contact with Mrs. Skorczynski, and we'll go forward with that once we get some more details from council's discussions around strategic planning and CBA discussions, starting with Jen after Wednesday. That is, you know, the date.
That's the federal government.
Federal, yeah. Once they announce those results, then we know where we're going and how they roll out their next phases of the project. We don't have any more knowledge of than waiting for one 20-day deadline, which is November 30th. So, so as we get that information, we'll, we'll definitely have communication between administration and yourself and whatever the training structure looks like.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your time today.
Thanks very much. Thanks. Hey, appreciate that. Up next, we have a council report and report on the committees within municipality. As always, newly elected council, I go through the bylaws and this pursuant to the society's procedure by law, bringing forward the report on the appointment to residents to the town committees and boards. All committee appointments will be until November 14th, 2026, which coincides with the term of this council. Council member appointments, committee of adjustment, property standards, and appeals committee. We have Council Val and Council Suki. The Federal Bay District Health Unit, which will be representative of this district, will be Council Wheeler. Police Services will be myself, and we are going through a process of the committees for the municipal rep to be replaced in that committee as well. Those names will be presented after the interview process, which will be taking place shortly. We have committee appointments, sorry, committee appointments, committee of adjustment, property standards, appeal committee. Srutra Kaveta, Michael Hamilton, Jennifer Grig, and Ken McIntyre. And library boards, Allison Allen, Hannah Demiris, Kristy Peach, Amy Mackey, Srutra Kabata, Katerina Dumas, and Carden Kozak. These appointments will be made, sorry, the police service board appointments will be made in order to generate, as I stated, after the interview process. That's it. So we have the, the motion here that the council, the town of Marathon, task report recommendation, committees and boards, and those committee of adjustments to the numbers of health, as I just stated, name over a secondary, Council Lake, Council Suki. Any questions, arrows, or missions involved?
Just one.
Sorry.
Just one. I know during the last term, we, we divested ourselves from being on the library board. So just again, inviting whoever the chair or whoever they want to send to come in for meetings, keeping us up to date. I think that we had a former library chair that was here every meeting, and it was awesome. I'd love that, a chance to communicate. So just passing over, that would be nice to, to have that, that communication piece now that we don't actually have a member on the boards.
Certainly, and that relationship is great with library boards. We'll extend that all the branch out, make sure that they're fully aware they can come to council.
We actually, so communicate, so council, private information for council leader. So we did sign a memorandum of understanding with respect to how the municipality and the library board are going to coordinate things like communication. So the formal process is already built in there.
Awesome. Thank you.
And as council is aware, the DSAF appointment was our, our position in the previous four years, and we share with Matt Twich, so it's a four-year rotation. So Matt Twich has the DSAF portfolio for the next four years, so we'll have communication back forth on any DSAF issues. So with that being said, I call motion on all favor. Terry, thank you. Up next, we have a report from the CEOs in regards to municipal policing OP section 10 policing contracts.
Sorry, worship, sorry, worship, student council.
Oh, man, yes, sorry. Just thinking of that name, pass it over you. Sorry. Council Zelik.
Yes, so our high school has actually had quite a few developments recently. It's been very exciting now that we are officially out of online learning for a year. We have a lot more student support in opening new things. The first of which is a drama club with a call secondary city superior. It's being hosted at the French School, and it's the first time in years we've opened a drama club. It's very exciting for any students wishing to pursue the arts, a very exciting type of like just students who aren't of the, who don't have any courses available in permanent arts. We are also hosting a transition volleyball tournament next week. So the grade eight teams from all the schools that feed into Marathon High School will be competing in a tournament hosted at the school. During this, we will have, we'll give them space to ask questions about the transition into high school and what to expect, hoping to bring back that tradition of welcoming the new students to the high school.
Great, thanks. Council Skorczynski?
Yeah, so recently I've attended my very first Indigenous youth council meeting, which I found very interesting as long as attending our student council meetings every week. But this year, we're trying to get back into the works of Powell that we found was a great connection within the community. So, but this year, we're going to focus on more of educating everyone on what the power means and how to be respectful, and we want to reach out into the community, so not just like our schools and beat upon, but we want to let businesses know and organizations know and everyone can attend. We also are focusing on getting away with divide in our schools, so we offer many different cultural ceremonies like, I never, I was never practicing, like, which you've all known, as well as smudging during the week. And we've realized not very many people go because they're not really sure what it is and have respectful, and that's respectful for them to go. So we're thinking of bringing in elders to educate the school, you know, maybe go to each class and just letting everybody know like, this is what you can do if you want to attend, have respectful. We're trying to have different activities, maybe like drum making or rattle making. And we're also coming up, our student council, we've talked about kind of getting more involved in the community. So we're talking about having a Christmas float, but our big thing is having a toy or food drive. So we're going to try to make, there's a way that you make toy boxes full of food or anything like a little knickknack that you can send to children who may not have all those presents under the tree. So, and on the seventh is the meeting for the Indigenous Youth Council where all the schools come together. So that's where we're going to discuss more of the power and just seeing what else was going on around our community, not just in Marathon, but if there's ways you can help other communities and if they want to be involved in things that we're doing.
Great, thanks. That's it. I'm going through the agenda so quickly here, that was so excited, passed by you, but I just wanted to take the opportunity because we did a swearing-in ceremony with, with our student counselors, but really never had the opportunity through the public to introduce them. So Council Skorczynski, Council Zelik, and we also have Council Mistix coming back as a mentor for our student counselors. So it's a great program. We really appreciate you coming in and taking part, and we encourage you to be fully participating in our council meetings and ask any questions. As I stated, when we had the swearing-in ceremony, there was no select questions. Every question's open to the table. And if you're not familiar with anything, just put your hands up and ask by all means. I just speak to Mayor Landry, they, they are starting their first student council program. And we've really pushed this program since 2011, since we've, we've initiated. Some councils are slow to, to adopt, and some others feel it's a lot of work. And I'm just, I recommend, because when you have student engagement in the community, you have the feeling what's happening with your age group and the peers within your, your high school and the people you, you know, hang out with. And we need to know that as well, because we don't always get our feet on the ground and understand what's going on in your world. So good to, good to have one of you here, and we enjoy the rest of your with your, your input to this council. So thank you for that. Up next, report on municipal policing and the OPP section 10 contract, five-year, Council, Mr. Skorczynski.
So the Community Safety and Policing Act 2019 is still moving through the regulatory process. And at the current time, there is no set date when it will come into force. Based on the foregoing, at its June 27th regular meeting, council approved entering into a five-year section 10 policing contract with the Ontario Provincial Police. The section 10 contract is our current contract. Administration has now received a section 10 contract from the OPP Municipal Policing Bureau to go into effect January 1st, 2023. Council must approve a bylaw to validate, to validate and enter into the new contract. Policing costs are included in annual municipal operating budgets. The 2023 municipal policing costs are estimated to be $760,000. Council's options, enter into a full renewal of a section 10 agreement for municipal policing for a term of five years, or do not enter into a section 10 agreement at this time. Your administration recommends option may be selected and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a five-year section 10 policing agreement with the province of Ontario as represented by the solicitor general, and that bylaw number 2033 be adopted accordingly.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the task report and recommendation on municipal policing contract. For that, the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, authorizing the mayor clerk to enter into a five-year section 10 policing agreement with the province of Ontario as represented by the solicitor general. Move by. Council Lake, second by Council Suki. Any questions? Council Lake?
Maybe just a, a little history lesson for the student counselors and council, their council Wheeler. We used to have a marathon police force. It was, it had our logo and everything. What are the other options around policing? It may be something that's worth knowing, right? We're choosing section 10 over other choices, so I don't, maybe it's.
The mayor is certainly the expert on this, police service.
Yeah, so 1994, the policing and marathon changed contracts from complete to military. I think at that time, we were paying $1.1 million for policing. We went to $700,000 in 1994. Some 25 years later, we are now paying $700,000 again. We went really high to over 1.4. There really is no other options in policing other than going back to releasing this contract, saying we don't want to go into the section 10. We go back to municipal police force. But I think that the expertise, the policing, you know, knowledge is not there, you know, to bring your force in. You have to provide all the cars, the vehicles, the boats, the, you know, safety gear, the search and rescue gear. Your, your Ontario police force has all of that gear to its, to its availability. We don't necessarily have all of that here in town, but if there's an emergency, your team comes in, if there's a murder, there's a special forces team come in. There's many different organizations within the OP that we don't pay for, but we, we got access to until we need them, so it's great. So I don't think there is really much option. The reality is, we, we really are paying way more, way less now than we were in 2015. Going back to that regional representation with through Noma Emo, we, we fought very hard through Noma to get the understanding that policing was too high in Northwest Ontario. And there was 16 of us that were impacted greatly with per property. There was some $760 per property. Now we're down in around the 200-plus cost per service. So policing is based on the availability of the crime that's in the community at a high level. We're, we're a very safe community, so we're paying less now based on average four-year crime rate. So we're in good shape. Half will be paid in 2015. I think that that pretty well covers our policing aspect. And it brings great economics to the community as well. When you think about twenty some officers that meet in our community, they're not only under contract with the OPP, but also the highway coverage as well. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, I'll call a question on favor. Terry, thank you. And I will learn a bit more about policing as I sit on the Ontario Police Service soon as it's more now. And I just was on my first meeting and he says I spend a council, get more information, understanding of that as well.
Sir, worship, one more question. I know we just passed it, but I recall like when Chris Whaley was here, attachment commander Whaley was here. He would come in and talk to us a couple of times a year. We've had that a little bit over the past, but can we pass that? I don't even actually know who the attachment commander is right now.
Yeah, can't you share him? I did speak to him while coming, so he he's willing to come. And so we can let him know, maybe do an early January update on policing in the community, where we're at and the staffing and.
Thank you.
So I can ask our deputy clerk to reach out. I can reach out as the chair, but we did chat about that with him coming in, talking about.
It feels like I don't know any of the officers anymore. You drive by a car and I don't, I don't recognize people like I used to.
Yeah, it's hard to get all the officers because of transition and changeover coming in and getting everybody, the least meaning that attachment commander and having all of you.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks. We have a report on the Cross Country Ski Club, this will be a club lease agreement. Mr. Suki. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The annual agreement between the town, Marathon, Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club for use of chalet expired April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Administration has been working with the Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club to discuss a new one year lease agreement. The key items of the new agreement include the term of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty two, to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three. The Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club will utilize the kitchen space with access to limited appliances. And the town will provide seven days notice upon hosting any town supported functions within the chalet facility. The new lease agreement will generate two thousand and two hundred dollars in net revenue to the municipality. Your options are A, enter into a new lease agreement with Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club, or B, do not enter into a new lease agreement with the Marathon Cross Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club. Your administration recommends option A be selected and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a new lease agreement with the Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club for the period of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty two, to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you very much for that report. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the task report recommendation on Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club lease agreement. And for that, the mayor and CEO be authorized to enter into a one year lease agreement with such club. Move by councillor Wheeler, second by councillor Lake. Any questions? Councillor Lake.
Yeah, maybe just that I think we really would like to support that club and make sure it's functional. It's a great, I mean, it's a great trail. Certainly was hosted the Olympic team back in ninety whatever.
Bye.
Yeah, is that sign still sort of up? It's kind of halfway there. The one piece in the the lease I wasn't sure about is so we could run a town event kind of there. And and as long as we give seven days notice, we can sort of have the chalet at that time. Yes, that's why that part is in there. So is it, are we renting out the the chalet over the winter if people want it for for events?
So I can take that one and, you know, I had a question from councillor Wheeler today about that. So one of the reasons we're only entering into a one year agreement at this point is as part of our strategic planning for the new council, we're going to look at the use of our facilities. And, you know, do we wish to utilize them for private events, you know, whether it be a wedding function or, you know, a party, a birthday party? We don't currently have the policy in place for that that we need, because there's a lot of things for us to to look at administratively. But that will be part of our discussion with council through our strat planning process. So we don't envision holding any private events over the course of the winter months. But in the event the the town wishes to use the facility, we built in language that respects the use of the chalet by the ski club, but also the fact that we're the owner and we may need it from time to time. So.
So if we did like a winter carnival, marathon winter.
That would be an excellent.
We wanted one of the sites to be there for a sugar shack or whatever, we could say freezing it.
That's a good example. But from a private event perspective, we'll be discussing that with council as part of our strat planning process.
Anything else?
Just a general inquiry. How is the the new club sort of worked out for their needs?
Yeah, I think, you know, part of the process that Miss Suki undertook with the club this year was just some general improvements, some simple stuff that we've learned, you know, utilization of the kitchen space, you know, for just basic events. Not be a second fridge brought in, just simple things like that. A few health and safety things, like we've ordered some new mats that we think will, you know, help track snow. So we're tracking the building. So simple stuff like that. But I think overall, it's it's been, of course, you know, this has been a long time partnership between the municipality and the club itself. And we're in regular communication and things will continue to improve as we look at further use of that building.
Actually, and I think this is probably the same question the golfer is going to ask, and I don't know if it's a strat plan question, but certainly I think lockers are one of those things that some of the users, I know the fire taught us that you probably don't want people's private gear in your buildings. But again, I just wonder if administrations looked at that around the ski club as a as a possibility.
So we're looking at it purely from a golf possibility right now.
Okay.
So there are some, you know, we do have a space there. Certainly, you know, I'm glad we didn't have a lot of clubs in the building when the fire happened. But we are researching some, I'll I'll say, you know, coin operated as an example, captions.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Councillor Bell, that's good. Okay, with that being said, I'll call a question on favor. Great. Thank you, Terry. Thank you. Thank you, Suki. Next, we have the report on revision of twenty two budget, Mr. Verbal.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. At the regular meeting account, sorry. At the regular meeting of council on April twenty fifth, the two thousand and twenty two budget was approved by bylaw two thousand and twenty three. Capital spending was five point five million dollars. This was included in the estimated spending. There were two major capital projects that were budgeted to be realized. Two point eight million dollars for a new public works garage and a million dollars for enhancements to Pebbles Beach. The bids received on each project were significantly significantly over budget and therefore no construction has started in twenty two, twenty two. Administration is requesting that the two thousand and twenty two budget be revised by reducing the capital requirements and related funding from government grants and debt. Council did agree to proceed with the garage at the special meeting of council on November third. Costs and financing of the garage and Pebble Beach projects will be discussed in the two thousand and twenty three budget meetings. The purpose of the revision is to update the budget estimates with a more accurate information, especially with the magnitude of the changes, such as capital spending going down by three point four million dollars and debt not required of three point one million dollars. There is no financial implications for the municipality as the total tax levy does not change. So the options are adopt bylaw two thousand and thirty four and approve the revisions as presented, or adopt the bylaw with amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that bylaw two thousand and thirty four be approved, adopting the revised estimates of all sums required during the year two thousand and twenty two.
Thanks for that report. I have a motion here, council hereby accepts the task report recognition on the revision to the two thousand and twenty two budget. For that, the approved bylaw be adopted, proving the revised estimate the sums required during the two thousand and twenty two budget year. Move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Suki. Questions? Terry, done?
We're just moving the money that we're going to spend this year to next year.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
And council will decide that next year.
So worship, I can just add, so there there are two projects that are going forward. Obviously, council approved the new works facility. And what council also approved was administration bringing back the best finance strategy as part of our two thousand and twenty three budget, which we'll be doing. As per Pebble Beach, we're in legal negotiations with the low bidder through the request for proposal process. We're confident that we're going to be able to bring the project in at a million dollars. And this project has already been a hundred thousand dollars was levied by the municipality. And we still have the committed funds from NOHSC and Fegnor for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. So both this doesn't mean both projects are not proceeding, they're both proceeding. How we handle the financing, we part of our two thousand and twenty three budget discussions that council will process.
So the hundred thousand dollars won't be a surplus, it will be a carryover for the capital to the levy.
It will be in the reserve.
You know, because you have no choice, because it was already levied for two thousand and twenty two.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Terry, look forward to these questions around budget anyways. So like, oh, good. Thanks for that, Mr. Verbal, Terry. I thought we were excited to spend that much more money than we have to, but the reality is that's what it is.
Those are good projects.
Yeah. I have a motion here for some check runs. All in check runs be approved for payment, the amount that council pay one million one eleven thousand four hundred, one million one hundred, one minute, zero one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and sixty seven dollars eighty seven cents. And payroll the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and sixty eight dollars and forty eight cents. Move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Suki. Any questions, errors, omissions, and notes? Check runs. Terry, now I call a question on favor. Terry, thank you. So I have just a quick verbal update on Noma. As you all received your updated minutes overview of the meeting from Noma last week, there are some key notes that were discussed at the meeting. As always, we we had a full agenda and a lot of discussion around a lot of different items, but we tried to always narrow it down. And of course, we were preparing for Roma, which is coming up in January, as well as the municipality has our own delegations. Noma has usually a delegation with many ministers to discuss the north in a bigger package in regards to some of the issues that are facing all of our municipalities throughout Northwestern Ontario. Some of the key discussions around that were the Northern Ontario Transportation Task Force. And as you all heard, the ministry has looked at reducing the amount of time for center bear to bear highways from sixteen to twelve. And also discussed about pull off locations that are going to be open for using washroom facilities. That is not really the reality in our part of the world yet. So we're going to make that very clear. So we've added that to the Roma discussions. We really appreciate it. Thank, we're going to thank government as well, going from sixteen to twelve, we will continue to monitor that, see how that looks like for our travel to and from the the medical needs or economic needs of some sort that we might have to do. Electricity advocacy roundtable update, we had that and we were all pleased, but we all know the specials around that. The the government is subsidizing our hydro rates right now dramatically. If you recall back and some members, councillor Lake, definitely remember this. On our council, we brought the argument to the government through council about how higher energy costs were. Some thousand dollars was an, was not an unusual bill for a homeowner in Marathon in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen. But the reality is the government has reduced those time of day charges, but it's just been packed onto the debt. So that's a concern for Noma. Excuse me. The Community Building Fund and some other electoral commission arguments that we all know they want to reduce in federal electoral district. Was a big discussion item for us. And then we supported the the vacant university veterinarian program coming up. They want to include that as part of their program. We can support that. We had a good discussion around the Northern Ontario School of Medicine about the enrollment, how we in nineteen ninety five focused on the the schools being developed, both in Laurentian and LU, but focusing on more entry level of northern students prior to external students. So that kind of got away from it. It's more based on scoring of your abilities and your your marks, obviously. So we've got to watch how we present that, but we're going to try to argue back with that and see how we can enroll more northern students into the program. Because the idea was we're enrolling northern students, they stay in the north if they're from the north to the place. So we've got to get back to that. We had a good discussion around that. And then we had our organizations updates in regards to each one of those. And then prior to that, we had a discussion on the unfunding and Mr. Verbal very familiar with that. Our unfunding has been reduced by some fifty seven thousand dollars again this year. But the fairness that five hundred million dollars is still being levied throughout the province of Ontario for all three hundred and ninety municipalities. So there's some winners and losers, but the reality is in the OSIF funding, which is another program that the Ontario government has, we've increased our funding and as well as Nord's, which is a northern funding model for five years, we've got additional funding for that. So that actually brings us back up, we're above where we were with the unfunding. So it's it's a shifting of, I know you.
Can I call you on your acronyms?
Absolutely.
I I bet you there's at least two people here that don't know what funding you're talking about.
So the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund is the unfunding, which is the Ontario government's subsidies that we all get, three hundred and ninety municipalities in Ontario get to offset our budgets, which is substantial for Marathon. Marathon's portion for two thousand and twenty three will be one million six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So take that out of our five point four million dollar budget, that the rate pair is going to have to pick up quite a dramatic increase in in rents. The Ontario OSIF funding is the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, which is another fund that we get for dollars for infrastructure funding through a guaranteed source. And then the Nord's funding is Northern Ontario Regional Distribution Fund to its offsets. The it's an additional fund that's just specific for Northern Ontario communities. So Minister Rickford announced that just this past spring and that's just, I think there's a five million dollar fund split up amongst all of the municipalities in the north. So it's additional funding. So we take them all, three of those, put them together, we're kind of not that bad a shape. And the residents of all of our northern communities have to respect the fact that we're getting quite a bit of subsidies back from the provincial. Then on top of that, the federal government, which is the gas that portion as well. So that there's a lot of money coming in from our our parents and grandparents, as I call them, right? Those regional provincial and federal governments.
Yeah.
So thanks for that. So also the then the updates from our municipal reps from Thunder Bay District, Knorr District, and Rain River District. And those three entities are struggling to continue to focus and bring people together for meetings. So we hired a new ED for the Thunder Bay District and we we approved her attendance at Roma, which we've never done in the past. So our ED Nikita Kava is going to attend Roma and shadow our economic, our executive director from Noma for the three days to have an understanding how that works with government and the meetings. So that's going to be interesting for her. And so she's excited about that. So that's that's what if we're normal meeting. Any questions on that? But you all received your update from from the executive director. So it was good. I sat in the airport all day Thursday to attend the twelve o'clock and five o'clock meeting and the next day meetings in in Toronto. But we got out and we flew for an hour and ten minutes towards Toronto and we flew turnaround, come back. So I mean, we never got to go to Toronto, but I, by the time I got back to Thunder Bay, it was like seven thirty, seven o'clock at night. It was all day, councillor Lake.
It it is interesting that you had the conversation around NOSOM. And then the two things that are coming up next are about trying to get doctors in the north. I do wonder if that that is one of those solutions to being short in healthcare is if we had more spaces for northern students through NOSOM or just had more NOSOM doctors graduating in general. I don't know how to support that, but certainly when when I see we're going to start, you know, lifting residency or experiencing Canada as a way in bringing in foreign doctors, I feel like the first step ought to be having local doctors.
Yeah, it's one of those beasts that kind of ran away from the initial concept. And, you know, that's not, we we pushed hard, strong to have the LU as well as Laurentian sites for, and they've increased the the residencies. They, that's great, but the requirements have changed, so they're bringing people from different locations. And those, we all know what happens. And the idea of the model was to bring people from the north that would stay in the north or even somewhat coming from some other location and you meet your your partner, you like the outdoorsy or, you know, just the quality of life. So we're not seeing that full impact and that's some twenty, some some twenty, you know, three years later. But it is what it is. So we got to watch how we, because it's the human rights scenario. How do we, how do we deal with that? How do we score that system? So it's a it's a discussion we're having, but we don't know what the answer is yet. So we've continued to focus on that. Okay. Up next, we have some bylaws. Bylaw number two thousand and thirty three, a bylaw to repeal, bylaw number two thousand and eleven, being a bylaw to enter into an agreement with for the police service and town of Marathon with the province of Ontario, to be presented by the solicitor general to be ready for a second and third time. It finally passes twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty two. Move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Suki. Any questions on that? Terry, now I'll call a question on favor. Terry. And bylaw number two thousand and thirty four, being a bylaw to amend the bylaw to adopt the estimates for the sums required during the year of two thousand and twenty two to be ready for a second and third time, it finally passes twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty two. Move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Suki. Any questions on that bylaw? Terry, done? Question on favor? Terry, thank you very much. Of course, we got the information as we received from the. Of course, we got the information has been received from the Roma Conference that will be held in Toronto on January twenty-second through the twenty-fourth in two thousand and twenty-three. And as always, we need to have individuals identified on this sheet. So I need a moment or a second to get on the floor. Who wants to move a second to motion? Counsel Wheeler, second by Counsel Lake. And attending will be Counselor. Lake, no. Wheeler? No. Suki?
I'd be interested in.
Okay. Valance?
No, I can't go back to Toronto so soon. Thanks, though.
Okay, no problem. And so for Counsel Wheeler's information, this is a, there's annual conferences with council that we tried to identify, like they should have tried to attend either the Roma or the AMO. So the AMO will become up anonymous, so consider that as well.
Yeah, for sure.
And maybe there's opportunity to get, it's just about knowledge and understanding, the work into the government and having those attendance with delegation meetings. Usually the CEO, the mayor, and one or two councils will attend on behalf of the community and then bring our arguments forward to what we need to have government at least look at. So it would be Counsel Suki, Mayor Dumas, and CEO Skorchinsky attending on behalf of the town. Great. All in favor? Terry, thank you.
You should be in first place by then.
So on a winning streak, I think just a game over there too. Still, we'll see how that looks. Maybe we can get to go there. Who knows? Have you ever seen expense report backed from a lease ticket? Why? Never. And they're very expensive to attend.
They are.
Especially if much role playing. I don't know why, but that's Toronto, I guess. Anyway, requests have been received from North Cumberland County and council for danger streamlining governance legislations for positions in Ontario. As Counsel Lake just identified, this is a resolution that they're saying basically that if there's positions coming in from other parts of the world that are landing in Ontario or in Canada, that there's the process to be accredited in Ontario would be streamlined. And if they meet the criteria, we went through that experience with our public works manager at the time, Vijen. His wife came to Marathon and wanted to practice. She was a practicing cancer doctor. And I couldn't figure out why she had to go back to Southern Ontario, take a two-year accreditation course, become a doctor in Ontario for cancer. I think cancer in India is the same as cancer in Ontario. But I understand there's differences in maybe educational standards, but it's frustrating. But anyway, I need a moment or a second to support that. Counsel Lake? Counsel Suki, any questions? Counsel Lake?
So I feel like we have a real good relationship with our healthcare community. Is this one that, I mean, I don't know anything about accreditation or if it's a good or bad idea. Could we maybe ask our local experts what their thoughts are before we support it? Or have we already done that?
Yeah, I don't see there, I don't think there's any harm in supporting it. I think it's a good discussion. So we still have our allied healthcare committee that's made up of the municipality and family health team and NOSH. So I think this is a good discussion. We generally have two meetings a year. We'll certainly be having one coming up as part of our two thousand and twenty-three budget. I think this is a very good topic.
Right, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Terry, thank you.
We just skipped over a B year worship, which is a call for nominations for the Roma Board if there's any interest.
Oh, right. Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry about that. And there was a call for nominations in that and we have a northern rep already on Roma Board. And so if anybody's interested, they can actually put their name forward to sit on the Roma Board for three years, four-year term, two-year term.
Two years.
Two years.
Yes.
And it's basically just no different than Noma. Roma is the same organization, just more southern, the Rome municipalities. And it's, you'd be mostly in Southern Ontario. So if you're interested, you can definitely put your name forward, but it's a big committee and it's a lot of travel finding that with Noma and Roma and AMO as well. So you have a voice at the table. That's the nice thing about it, right? And you bring northern land, so it's good. Yeah. Two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-seven is four-year term, sorry. Okay, prior to before a journal, we have an in-camera meeting to discuss. But there's also the parade coming this weekend. Let's make an announcement of that. And that's on December third.
On Saturday.
Saturday night, six o'clock. Same route, high school to the Lakeview Community Centre. And encourage everybody to get their clothes together and have some fun and hopefully it'll be a nice Saturday evening. And we have an in-camera to discuss labor relations, employee negotiations prior to this public meeting. So once again, thank you very much. And I know, I know I look at both my student councillors and you're kind of like, that's a lot of information going back and forth. And, you know, Counsel Lake has asked me to slow down and try to introduce as much as I can. We're just familiar with this. We just talked, but by all means, don't be afraid to put your hand up and say, hey, I don't understand what that is. And we'll definitely try to assist you get the knowledge of what we're doing and how the governance works in the municipality. So thanks again and calling me to adjourn at the hour of five, four fifty-five PM. Counsel Lake and Counselor. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.